City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. Let's see, today is November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you all for being here. We have two study items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is a stormwater master plan outcomes and program development. Item number two is residential waste engagement, final update and recommendations. But we will start our meeting as we do most of our, most of our meetings with the public comment and just for the record, we'll let it show that all of our councilors are here tonight. We appreciate you all being here. Thank you so much. So when I call your name, if you'd please come to the podium and give us your first name, last name, tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge and maybe spell your last name so we get it right in the record. So our first speaker is Taylor Tate and Joy Op is on deck.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is Taylor Tate, T A I T. I work for Congresswoman Brittany Pedersen and today I just wanted to talk about what we can do for Wheat Ridge and the people here. We work on federal issues. I work on Social Security and Medicare. We help with people getting their veterans benefits. We help with IRS issues and we are obviously looking to help the constituents in the district. I do want to thank the mayor and city council for giving me this opportunity. I also wanted to mention on November twenty-first, Thursday at ten a.m., we're going to be holding a health and public services resource fair at the Wheat Ridge Rex Center. There we'll have people like me who will be able to help direct you in different places and we'll also have representatives from the agencies. I believe an IRS agent or representative will be there as well as some help officials. If anyone wants to chat with me, I'll be waiting over there. I have cards and if you need to just reach out to the office, our phone number is three zero three two seven four seven nine four four. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much and please thank the Congresswoman for all she does for our city. Thank you. Joy Op and Sarah Nepomuceno. You'll get it right when you get up there.
Hi, my name is Joy Op, O P P. I live at forty-six Hillside Drive. Counsel, thank you for taking the time to review the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Residential Waste Engagement Project. Waste conversations have a funny history in Wheat Ridge and I appreciate that counsel is continuing to listen. As you know, I'm on the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee and had the opportunity to hear a lot of feedback on the direction of waste management in our city. With the presentation and study session tonight, we sincerely hope the city can find some clarity on a complicated project. But I wanted to just touch on my experience with the Sustainable Neighborhoods Preferred Hauler Program. Several years ago, Paramount Heights and Applewood Villages selected Summit Waste as our preferred hauler. We, it was a preferred hauler that we would recommend but not require that our neighbors would sign up for. In the several years since then, my neighborhood has over a hundred neighbors that have signed up, which is a third of the houses in my neighborhood. Summit is by far the most popular hauler in Paramount Heights. We approached several haulers to see if we could get a discount from their standard rate when we had a certain number of people sign up. In selecting the hauler, we required that they offer recycling, door pickup compost service, and we also requested twice a year yard waste collection and an annual dumpster pickup for large items. Summit has been a dream to work with, offering impeccable service, reasonable rates and special personalization that my neighbors don't get reaching out to their own individual hauler. The benefits of having a preferred hauler don't eliminate the number of trucks down the street, but the program has instilled a sense of belonging to a better cause and has raised awareness about the benefits of collective hiring. As a Sustainable Neighborhoods Program expands, offering a preferred hauler to the participating neighborhoods is a great balance between allowing residents the freedom to self-select while unifying around responsible waste management practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Nepomuceno. Nepomuceno, okay, and Betsy Cobbard on deck.
And it's spelled N E P O M U C E N O and Sarah without an H.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Nepomuceno. I am a nine-year Wheat Ridge resident. I'm a new member of the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee and I'm here tonight speaking for the first time because I'm really excited that council has approved the Sustainable Action Plan that our committee is going to be actively involved in getting some initiatives off the ground. I personally will be working on expanding and improving the TLC cleanup days as well as bringing more fun, community-oriented events based around sustainability, like a native plant seed swab and other fun environmentally friendly things that will get the community involved. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Our next speaker is Betsy. I'm going to let you do the, do the last name and Stu Stewart is on deck. I've got that.
It's Betsy Coppick, C O P P O C K. And I'm a, I'm a resident of Wheat Ridge and I'm a member of Sustainable Wheat Ridge. Good evening, all of you. I wanted to encourage you all to look at the recommendations that Mary's going to present in a few minutes and, and take action on those. But I wanted to specifically expand on yard waste collection and have you think about that in particular. And, you know, ideally, we all would compost in our yards, but, you know, we aren't there that like that as a community or even myself. I don't, I can't get that far. But as you also know, that Wheat Ridge is an older neighborhood. We've got lots of large trees, okay? It's great for climate cooling, but the number of leaves can outstrip people's ability to mow it all into the grass and to compost into their yard. My house, this weekend, we raked up twenty-eight paper bags full of leaves and counting and I don't know where I'd put all of those. So I, I don't know how you compost twenty-eight bags unless we find somebody's yard to put them in, which I've done in the past. So over the weekend, Wheat Ridge had the fall cleanup, yard cleanup at Anderson. We had five roll-offs there and we had about a hundred and twenty-three houses participate in that. If you think about it, Wheat Ridge has about fourteen thousand households and if you subtract off, and I don't know the numbers exactly, but if you subtract out multi, multifamily, that's about a one percent turnout for the city. Now, we, I'm also in Paramount Heights and we have an annual fall pickup also of leaves where you not pick up drop-off and we have the summit track, truck comes out and we, we get about ten percent turnout for our only, our very small neighborhood of two hundred and seventy-five. So if you take that effort that we've got going on where you just have to get up to your house, up to the neighborhood, you know, two blocks away to drop off your stuff and you were to expand that to what Wheat Ridge could do from one percent to ten percent, that's fifty roll-offs, okay? What a difference that would make in the landfill. So that's where I'm coming from. And so how do you guys accomplish that? You can think about offering more weekends and a permanent drop-off location. You can improve the outreach on the communication of that availability and you could provide seasonal curb side pickup and allow, that allows a lot of people without trucks to be able to get their, their leaves there. Although the community was mixed on a single waste hauler, the community was very strong in their interest in expanded options for yard waste drop-off opportunities and interest in curbside yard waste collection. I urge council to consider expanding drop-off opportunities while also piloting curbside pickup for the yard waste. My neighborhood shows that having good outreach through neighborhood social media and easier access to yard waste pickup increases the participation rate. And I'm sure my neighborhood's participation rate would increase beyond ten percent if it was even easier to participate. And I'm sure other neighborhoods in Wheat Ridge would increase from one percent to a much higher rate if they had easier access. So please look into all of them and especially the improvements for yard waste. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stu Stewart.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Stu Stewart. Last name is S T E W A R T. I'm a resident of District Two here in Wheat Ridge, have been for about ten years, also on the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee. Thanks to council for considering residential waste hauling and what it means to our community. The results of this public engagement project are fascinating to see. There is such a wide range of perspective and interest and it's just a part of what makes Wheat Ridge what it is, it's such a great place. So overall, this public engagement is good, but at the same time, it's challenging to harness what this really means. It's complicated to distill and yet it's still so critical for collective involvement moving forward. These results, though, that we're going to review this evening, similar to survey responses from two thousand and twenty-one, show that over half of respondents are in support of implementing organized trash hauling in neighborhoods, viewing that as essential or very important. There are, of course, many other factors such as cost, convenience, reliable service, you know, all of those things that make total sense as a consumer. Those are all of the considerations that'll be discussed this evening, I'm sure. To settle on a positive solution that will receive broad appreciation will require further understanding of the trade-offs associated with any new approach. Some of the next steps proposed by city staff this evening will certainly help accomplish that. In combination, continued engagement with the community will still be critical and perhaps become more educational as the true cost and scope of proposed changes are better understood. As we look even further into the future, I truly hope that we consider the environmental costs of our current inefficient system. Refuge trucks get the worst gas mileage of all heavy trucks, according to the Department of Energy. That includes tractor trailers, that includes city buses and some other large vehicles. I hope we work to minimize refuge truck miles driven in the future, but I know there's a long ways to go to get there. And so taking some of these steps to understand our options, to work together to get there is really critical. So I'm so pleased to see that the next steps being recommended this evening to divert more waste in the near term and to continue to explore our options for a better future are in front of you all and I really appreciate your consideration. Please support the next steps being recommended by city staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. All right. That concludes all of the folks we have signed up to speak. Thank you all for coming and speaking. We love to hear from you. So we will now go to our first agenda item, which is the stormwater master plan outcomes and program development. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. Maria DeAndrea, our Public Works Director's here this evening with our consultant team, I believe, right? Yep. Back there, but I think Maria's going to get this started for us.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just let that get started there. Oops. There we go. All right. Good evening. I'd like to, really excited to be here tonight. This has been more than a year effort. It feels like I've been here with the city now just about almost two and a half years, a little over two years, I guess. And it feels like stormwater has been a focus of mine ever since I showed up. So really excited to show you the recommendations tonight and to talk about some of the other steps that really go into a full programming of our overall stormwater system. I'd like to introduce a couple of folks. First, on my left is Melissa Bryant, who was our project manager with Respect. Thank you, Melissa. She oversaw her team at Respect to do all the analysis and she'll be available to ask or answer very detailed questions. And we have Alan Leek, who's also with Respect. He's the principal, one of the principals at Respect and also oversaw the project. He is a Wheat Ridge, he grew up in Wheat Ridge, actually, on Wadsworth Boulevard. So his family is very familiar with the area and has a lot of good history both here and in Nevada. So we had a great team to help us in preparing the plan. And again, really, you'll see here in a minute, just a lot of very thoughtful detail that went into this. Thank you, guys. All right. So we're, we'll give a, I'll give a brief overview and again, Melissa and Alan will be here to answer any detailed questions. Our purpose tonight really is to talk about the outcomes and recommendations from the plan and we'll go through those in more detail and then also talk a little bit about what, again, what makes up that larger program. So not only those, that capital investment that we need to make in terms of both our kind of localized improvement projects, but also regional projects, working with Mile High Flood District and then overall system maintenance and repairs and then what we're doing from the standard side and kind of planning ahead and ultimately project and program funding. So just a little bit of background here. I really like this slide overall and, you know, really where does all that rain water, water runoff when snow melts, where does that all go? And when it collects either as it shows there in the graphic up on the very top there, not only lawns, but coming off of gutters, coming off of driveways and then ultimately gets out into the roadway system. Now you're starting to pick up things like pet waste, oils and fertilizers and all of that ultimately, as it shows there in the bottom, gets dumped out into our waterways and affects our natural vegetation as well as our fish and other aquatic life. And then this graphic just shows a little bit on the left there. So in a natural environment where there's more open space, grass, that sort of thing, you can see there that a lot of it gets infiltrated back into the ground when rain comes down or snow melts off. But then on the right, in a more urbanized environment, seventy-five to a hundred percent of that, because it's covered with pavement or buildings or whatever, a lot less gets infiltrated into the system, more comes as runoff. And so therefore, that's what we need to manage through our stormwater system. So why do we need to manage that? It really ultimately comes down to, not only is there federal and state laws associated with that, of course, but it ultimately comes down to safety. So protecting not only structures and property from flooding, but making sure that people aren't affected by that in terms of drowning, that sort of thing. And also, as I mentioned previously, the pollution of our waterways and deterioration to those natural environment. So our stormwater system is made up of a series of pipes, overall about thirty-six miles throughout the city. And a lot of those were installed probably even before we became a city, so before nineteen sixty-nine, as different properties developed, different developments went in. And so what we're seeing really is somewhat of a piecemeal system where little bits were probably even farmers put in their own system to kind of get the drainage away from their property, but there hasn't been a lot of collective overall kind of looking at the system to see how that all connects and/or interacts. But we do also then have various drainage channels and detention or retention basins that we need to manage and all of that together comes up to our current system. You can see there, the picture on the right is a actual inlet up on about Independence and about probably Thirty-seventh Avenue. I took that last summer. And as we've talked about before, a lot of that system, because it's kind of reaching end of life, it is at the point where it's needing major rehabilitation or repair. This is graphic just shows kind of where the water runs off. So all of the green ultimately either through storm sewer or runoff over land comes to Clear Creek. So it's a major waterway that runs through Wheat Ridge. The blue there, kind of in the southern portion and to the west is Lena Gulch, so tributary to that area and that's coming up through Lakewood and ultimately connects into Clear Creek right at about Kipling, just south of the Rex Center, really, that on the east side of Kipling, near the Rex Center. And then the pink in the southeast corner actually travels to Sloane's Lake. So all of that water travels out of the community and to the east and to Denver, to Sloane's Lake. So the process that Respect went through to do the master plan, so if you recall, we did a study back in nineteen seventy-nine. I'm not sure what kind of computerized programs were available back then, but pretty, pretty minimal, I'm guessing. And so this really was an effort in terms of very detailed analysis doing, using standardized modeling and stormwater analysis programming that they are used to doing. And we also worked with our, use the process followed by the Mile High Flood District. So using our own city GIS data, we also used Dr. Cog Lidar GIS information to help us produce that model. And the area, I'll jump ahead just a little bit to show you this graphic, the entire city was broken down into more than six hundred sub-basins, meaning that each of those smaller areas, and the map kind of down the bottom here shows a little bit, but each of these little blue dots, each of these little areas, basically, you can imagine whether it's going to an inlet, going to, traveling along the curb up to a certain corner, all of those were subdivided. So a very, very detailed model. And the number of sub-basins really gives you an indication, not only the detail, but also how much, again, that system was kind of not interconnected with each other. So a lot of just close analysis of very small areas. So the updated rainfall data from Mile High Flood District was used within the model and then we looked at three storm events. So that was the five-year, the twenty-five-year and the hundred-year. And what that means is a one-hundred-year event means that that has a one percent chance of happening in any given year. So one in one hundred, a one in five or a five-year event is that it can happen once every five years potentially. But that could be back-to-back, that could be, you know, spread out even further than that, but it's a probability analysis. So, and what that helps us do is look at what is that level of risk that we're willing to accept. Many communities, especially newer communities, as they get built currently, not only in the Denver metro, but across the country, try and achieve a hundred-year storm event protection, meaning that not necessarily within pipes, but within both the street capacity, so you can hold a certain amount of water in the street before it spills out onto private property and then also within pipes, they're trying to shoot for a hundred-year capacity. We do not have that everywhere. Again, a very, you know, system that was not fought through all the way from a high-level analysis, which is why we're really targeting the twenty-five-year as an event that we would like to achieve. Now, that's not to say that we don't have a hundred-year protection in some areas, it's just somewhat spotty. So this shows those three events and the colors here indicate not only where the problems exist, but also then the width of the lines indicate how much larger those pipes would need to be to accommodate that type of storm event. So if you look over here, my mouse works, yeah, it does. So along Forty-Fourth Avenue, kind of, and then coming down between Tabor and Prospect Lakes here, this system you can see is a pretty wide line and that needs to be upgraded not only in the five-year, but also in the twenty-five and a hundred-year event. But the good news is, is there's not a whole lot of problems down in this southern area. So we did go through an effort as well to solicit input from the community. We had a page on the What's Up Wheat Ridge page and actively solicited comments from residents. We've also within staff have collected comments from people where they're like, hey, it's flooding, I'm having issues here. And a lot of that does line up with some of these areas, but we've also noticed that a lot of that can be also nuisance flooding, meaning that it might be at the corner where it's icing up in the street, it's not necessarily affecting their structure nor their private property necessarily. So that shows the five and then you can see here as we get into the twenty-five, those lines start to get wider, so larger pipes to accommodate that larger storm event and you can see a few more areas popping up there on the map. And then finally, within the hundred, again, if you look at the, over here at Forty-Fourth, you can see that those are significantly wider, meaning bigger pipes again. And then we start to see some other areas like Pierce Street and along Forty-seventh Avenue start to appear as well. This is a list of the capital projects that were identified through this analysis and then very rough cost estimates, which include about a thirty percent contingency factor because, again, this is just very high level. Ultimately, what we would do is, as we move forward, we would do more detailed studies of each of these areas. So if you just look at the first one here, I'll show that. So Forty-Eighth Avenue, it's just simply a connection from Forty-Eighth Avenue to the north up to Clear Creek. So there's either a low spot or that pipe within Forty-Eighth is inadequate to convey that water and we need to get it out sooner to the creek. That's probably a relatively straightforward example, but if we look at some of these other ones, again, just a single pipe, Holland there on the east side of the high school. Here's a, maybe a better example. So Pierce Street, all running all the way from Thirty-Eighth North is to the left on your screen here and then going up to Forty-seventh Avenue. And then the next project shows this actually meandering kind of over here and getting ultimately under I-70 up through Creekside Park to Clear Creek. Now, there might be other options to affect this drainage. Maybe we do some detention that can reduce that pipe size, maybe we take a different route for whatever reason. This was just kind of a very high level to get it on paper, to know that we've got, this is an area of concern and we need to do a detailed drainage study to say what is the exact route for this and what is the exact solution, if you will. But this gets us in the ballpark to know that, to put this on our radar. And this ultimately might be the right solution, but for right now, we want to, we need to take a further in-depth look at some of these. So just going through these more quickly, so you can see here, the kind of the gray ellipse here shows Pierce Street. These are actually two separate projects because Pierce was pretty costly, I think over three million dollars and then this is like another two point seven to get us out. But ultimately, you'd want to do not, doesn't make sense because everything's traveling to the north. You wouldn't really do Pierce without then having this piece in place because all the water is traveling this way north on Pierce and ultimately getting out this way to Clear Creek. So that's just kind of almost phase A and phase B of this project, if you will. And then Thirty-third Avenue is another one, which we know is a low area. Again, we've experienced issues down in this neighborhood prior. Twenty-ninth Avenue, this is over on the, kind of the southeast portion of town. This is kind of a spillover project literally from some work that was done to use an old water main along Twenty-ninth Avenue and there's just some work capacity needed to make sure that that system, right now, what's happening, it's actually bubbling up into Sheridan Boulevard. And so we need to capture that water before it gets to Sheridan and we get a lot of calls about icing over there, which calls about icing over there, which I know Patrick's experienced as well, or at least down in Falls. And then just another connection here, this is on, at the bridge at 44th. So again, they show it on the west side, it could be on the east side, you know, we'll get into a little bit more detail as we start to design and construct these projects. So just going back up to the list here, and again, we can answer any specific questions you have about these. Just as a reminder, so that total list right now, that totals just over $15 million for those projects, which again is a very high-level estimate. And then a very expensive project is West 44th Avenue that I had pointed out on that screen. So our goal, again, would be to achieve 25-year event protection, which would mean that these pipes would be upsized by roughly, if that's the preferred method, which you see, there's probably not a lot of storage opportunities within this corridor to do detention, which could make the pipes smaller. We're probably looking at pipes four to five feet larger than what they are in there right now. And this is a known area for us as well, where we know we have some failing pipe, or at least deteriorated pipe in this section of the port. So there might be an opportunity to kind of kill two birds with one stone, where we not only replace pipe, but we upsize it at the same time. Then a few other projects that kind of came out of this effort was Kipling between 44th south to Clear Creek. So this would, kind of going, again, on the, towards the rec center, and, you know, is there, Kipling is a CDOT street, as well as the frontage roads along I-70, which you can see there is a very significant cost. And so we want to, at this time, we're recommending doing some more work to talk with CDOT. What is their responsibility? Would they be able to partner with us in terms of upsizing those pipes? Or do they feel that that's a city responsibility completely? We want to examine that some more. So right now, those costs for those two CDOT projects are not included in our totals. And then ultimately, there, it looks like there is some need for additional drainage work up at Creekside Park, just because it is starting to spread out over, up there. And as we saw in one of these graphics. You see right here, this is Creekside up in the top here. So if we did this system, there's still some spillover that's happening up here beyond the system that we would need to put in. So again, we have not identified that as being part of the stormwater program at this But, okay. So then, just again, looking at the overall program, we want to look at this comprehensively from four different aspects. So this is kind of focused on, and the stormwater master plan focuses on capital projects. So where do we know that we have undersized systems that we need to upgrade, like I just talked about? And those can be both regional and local. And then we have system maintenance and repair, planning and standards, and project and program funding, which I'll talk about each of these now for just a moment. So first, capital projects, we just saw, as you see there, that 15.1, 170,000, 15.1 million dollars, we just talked about. And then regional project funding, these are projects where we would be led by Mile High Flood District. They solicit input from us every year on potential maintenance projects, as well as potential capital projects. And they are very good about trying to spread their money around within Jefferson County or within Adams County, wherever those boundaries sit. There is a special tax that all property owners pay that goes to Mile High Flood District, and they're really good about trying to divvy that up in a very even way. So the regional project funding, I'll just show this graphic. So those three areas again, so this is work that we know needs to be done in the Lena Gulch stretch. Then we know we have issues right now up in the Clearveil neighborhood. We want to take some of those properties hopefully out of the floodway, not just the floodplain. And we're working right now, the Mile High Flood District has, is looking at this stretch right now in terms of upgrading those costs and what is the right solution for that. And then some of these dots just represent specific projects that need to occur at those locations. For example, there's a drop structure here that needs to be replaced. We potentially want to do some stormwater detention here where there was a, currently there's Denver Water Basin holdings right now. And then also potentially using this open space right here for detention as well. So the 16 million that's identified in this program is really for just the city's contribution. So we're hoping that Mile High Flood District, their typical practice is to match that at 50%. So we're estimating these to be, at this time, around $32 million to do just the work in Clear Creek and Lena Gulch. So at this time, we have not identified any funding for the two Sloane's Lake or the ones here in the southeast corner. And particularly because we're, this essentially is at the upper end of the basin, these both drain through Edgewater down to Sloane's Lake, we would have to work with Edgewater and Mile High Flood District to make sure that that funding is in place. So we couldn't really, it doesn't make sense for us to go ahead as the, kind of the top of the stream and fix those problems unless the downstream folks are working with us. So just jumping back, so again, the regional project funding, that 16 million represents the city's amount, not Mile High's. And then again, just talking about, as we do these projects, we would need to do some more detailed study at each of those locations. So all of that together adds up to just over 32 million. And then system maintenance and repair. So again, we've experienced quite a few issues around the city over the last couple of years. There are actual photos from city projects that we've undertaken. And here, this map on the right just shows, again, some areas of concern. So this is compiled from staff, where we know, we want to get in there and just investigate more closely what's going on. We've been having some issues just as, over the last couple of weeks, up here at 34th and Kipling, for example. We've got some clogged pipes, potentially some damaged or failing pipes at that location as well. And we haven't had that much snow or snow melt, and yet we're still seeing a lot of drainage issues at that location. So we're investigating that a little bit further. Areas here along Young Field are known as well, 44th Avenue, and then this entire area kind of up along Ridge Road as well. So these are the areas that we would target as we get into what we're going to, we'll show here in terms of system maintenance and repair. So our recommendation from staff would be to inventory all of our failing sections, and how we would do that would be going through and systematically cleaning first the pipes, so cleaning them out, either pushing the dirt forward and then vacuuming it out of an inlet, or vacuuming it out this way. So either pushing it out or pulling it out one way or the other, and then go through with an actual television camera, a camera of some sort, to televise what's going on on the interior of the pipe, and then look at those sections individually to say, where is our priorities and where do we need to focus on repairs? So in some cases, I separated those bullets, so we either need to replace actual failed sections of pipe, remove it like we did down on Hoyt Court, and replace it with new, or hopefully we can catch some of these sections before they completely fail and line them. So that's a non, less invasive process. We did that over in 32nd and Swadley last year, or, yeah, it was a Swadley, 32nd and Salisbury, excuse me. And that's much less intrusive to the neighborhood, still able to let traffic go by. And the good thing is, is that it's far less costly than actually removing the pavement, removing the dirt, and replacing the pipe. So if we can catch these sections, we feel like, and get ahead of them some more, we can actually save costs. So again, yeah, to the last bullet there is really proactively trying to address those failing sections. And so our existing system repairs, and this is a total over the next 10 years, we estimate to be just over $16 million, which is just roughly about a million and a half per year. And then we would add some personnel to do some of these tasks as well. So instead of outsourcing that or contracting, we think it's more efficient to have those staff on hand to actually go through and clean and televise that. We do have a Vector truck right now, we would probably need to upgrade that, but some of that equipment and the personnel would actually be cheaper in the long run than trying to contract that out each year. And then planning and standards, so obviously we're going to complete the stormwater master plan, that was the key in terms of planning ahead. We're also currently working with Mile High Flood District on updating the costs associated with the Clear Creek Master Drainage Plan. And again, that's that Clearveil area from 44th Avenue to approximately just west of Wadsworth. And then one of the other elements that Respect is working on is updating our development regulations. So right now, when a new development comes into the city, there's certain drainage requirements that they have to meet in terms of both water quality and water detention. So we want to make sure that those are in alignment with Mile High Flood District standards, because that is a regional standard, if you will, and make sure that development is pulling their fair share. So we don't want them to unnecessarily overburden our existing system when new development comes in, but really take care of it on-site themselves so that they aren't putting more water into the system or creating new issues than the city has to resolve. And then finally, this is the last slide, is just kind of summarizes everything together. We do have, in the 2025 budget, is money to undertake a utility rate study. So the total, as you can see there, is just over $50.6 million. And our goal with that utility rate study would be to say is, if we did implement potentially a dedicated stormwater utility fee, what would be the rates that we would need to charge to implement something like that? So that is, the intent would be is that we'd move forward that early in 2025, and then bring that information back to City Council, probably in about early second quarter of 2025. So with that, happy to answer any questions, open this up for discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Director. We'll start with Counselor Weaver.
Not sure if it's plugged in. Couldn't make the green light go on.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I just, I'm looking at a discussion, and I just want to go through the questions. But first, I have one other question, because there are parts in the city that don't have any storm sewer at all, and I was just curious what, and in thinking certainly about, about funding and all of these different things, it seems like there's a whole nother layer of many areas that are just not served by pipes at all. Where I live, it's one of the oldest places in Wheat Ridge, so it has no sewer. And for those of you who have not experienced some of these water events over at the farm, all of the water kind of comes in, and there's an open ditch in front of it. And then while I, I am not in the floodplain in the back of my property, I am off of 38th Avenue and have actually, in one of these events, had the front of the property flood. And so what, is there anything in this plan to sort of think about how to make all of Wheat Ridge connected? I realize that's even more money, and I just wanted you to speak to that as well.
Yeah. May I have Melissa speak a little bit more of the methodology for areas where they don't have pipes, and how you look at that? A little bit more depth.
Good evening. So we did model the entire system based on the existing infrastructure. And so in our analysis of the five, the 25 and the 100-year, what we did was we took into consideration the flows in the area, but also where we are seeing flooding in the roadways over a foot. And so for those areas, that's where we would go in and propose that infrastructure be put in to minimize that flooding in that area. And so with like a five-year storm event, we would allow for like half a foot to overflow. And for 100 or 25-year, it would be at the foot level. And so, again, we just want to make sure that we're minimizing that, and it wouldn't get above a foot beyond what the street level is. And so that's where we would propose that infrastructure be put in. Okay. We do have property flooding in that area, is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I think my question is, so what, because it's an open-air sewer, not, not the black sewer, but the storm sewer is open air, it obviously gets plugged, because it's going underneath all of these different driveways, and there are small conduits, and it could be snowing, it could be lots of things, there could be leaves in there. So, so while I, I understand it modeled, it might flow just fine, but where you have no conduit at all, you're having these above, you know, it's kind of like having above-ground lines, power lines, where you're, it's being affected by anything that's in the roadway or on the side of the ditch that's, that's then causing flooding. And I just, I just want to make sure that we're comprehensively thinking about the fact that everybody needs covered storm sewer for, for property protection. It's, it's kind of a question I just wanted to lob out there that doesn't have an answer, I just want to make sure we're being inclusive of it in the cost of.
Right. We, we did make sure, like, you know, Maria mentioned, we, we broke the watersheds up until like 650 subwatersheds, so we did look at those individually. And again, our focus was on the five-year, 25, and 100-year storm events. And so I can, I can get with you and see like the specific area that you're, that you live in?
Yeah, no, and, and I know it floods, so I'm, I'm not particularly worried about that. I, I know what will happen, and I have to be out there with Michelle to, to solve it. But I'm not the only one in Wheat Ridge. I guess what I'm saying is, is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we need to move forward with, with some sort of stormwater funding, and we have to figure this out. I just want to make sure that as we go forward with these plans, that we're inclusive of properties that have.
Don't have infrastructure.
Have no storm sewer at all. And, and encourage us to not just leave it as, just because it models that it goes through these open systems.
True, yes.
They don't actually work, you know. Or, or I'll just start sending pictures to everybody at, you know, midnight when, when it floods, but thank you.
And, and just specific to that area, Councilmember Weaver, so our 38th Avenue study that we're wrapping up right now between Young Field and Kipling does identify some additional storm sewer over there too. And so that has been taken into account, but not necessarily in the plan, because it's part of that project cost. But to your point, where do we have any potential other areas of that around the city that we haven't necessarily identified?
And just, just so we're inclusive of, of whatever funding is needed. And, and I just, I just really appreciate it. I, I think this is a, we have to deal with this. So I have a lot of interest in establishing some sort of funding for, for stormwater issues, and I think that's all I had. Goal is supportive of this, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Rome.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director DeAndrea. I have a couple of questions. So the first one is, has staff created like a priority criteria for, for each pipe?
We have not yet. So that list that I showed back here. Somewhere, here we go. This is not necessarily prioritized. I think that would be our next step, is to look at this in terms of where do we get our biggest bang for our buck? Obviously, we can't go out and do $15 million worth of work even next year, even if we had the money. So it's going to take us some time from a resource, staff resource, to get after this. So I think this would be our next effort, is to get some input and then start to prioritize these.
The, the other component of this that we'll take a look at is, we want to do like a five- and 10-year timeframe to look at these projects, but we also want to coordinate with your water and wastewater systems, and also your street repairs that you have coming up, because the last thing we want to do is dig up a street, repair the storm sewer, and then, you know, the next year, the water system needs to come in and do some repairs, or a road gets completed or fixed, and then we come in and dig it up for the storm sewer. So we, we want to look at a comprehensive operations and maintenance plan for water, wastewater, and roadway improvements, and then develop a five- and 10-year plan.
And that, and that was my next question about looking at water and sewer, you know, because I know they want to do upgrades, and that, it sounds like you would maybe coordinate with some of those entities.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I noticed that, like on Young Field and maybe along I-70, you talked about there are some, some issues with the pipe. Would I be correct in thinking that perhaps the road salt, I don't know if. Would I be correct in thinking that perhaps the road salt, I don't know if you, would you use different types of pipe because, because of the road salt? Is a little bit of an issue in some of those areas?
Potentially, yeah. That's, that's interesting. I haven't, didn't make that connection before. But we do, both from I-70, the drains, you know, coming off of I-70, as well as the salt that we put on the roads could be a contributing factor. So our corrugated metal pipe, obviously RCP or reinforced concrete pipe pulls up a lot better to salt. So I think in certain locations where we do have a lot of high salt usage, it might be good to look at a different material down there as opposed to just our straight metal pipe, if you will. Good point.
And then, thank you. And then the last question I have is, is a kind of a small request. But, you know, everybody gets really, usually gets really excited, everything we see above the ground. And, you know, we understand if there's a problem, we want that, you know, everybody wants the problem to be corrected. But once it's corrected, we kind of forget about it. And so one request I have would be to, on the longer, more costlier infrastructure that we're doing, once those sections are complete, to require the contractor to have a sign that says, hey, we just completed whatever, half a mile, you know, of improved infrastructure and it cost X amount of dollars. And so people see that like, oh yeah, I, I understand that. So just so they can kind of understand, you know, when we ask them for, you know, potential tax, that they understand this is where that money is going. So that's a, that's an ask, if that'd be possible.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Additional questions? Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this presentation. I am in support of moving forward with a fee. One of the very first study sessions that I was at nine years ago, we were talking about stormwater and we're talking about a potential fee. And here we are, nine years down the road. And I think it's really time for us to move forward. Because I see no other way to fund this without really cutting a lot of services to our community. And when we cut services to our community, I mean, it's not just things like, oh, maybe the recider is closed once a week. It's like our police department and, you know, all of those things. In the memo, there was, there was a, kind of a little note that said, around the fee base, that commercial and industrial properties would, their fee would be based on the amount of hard surfaces that they have on their property because of the, most of the stormwater runoff is running off of the property. And that this would incentivize property to develop an onsite stormwater detention facility such as rain gardens, which would not be included as the in previous area. Part of the problem with the commercial industrial properties is that there are actual requirements as far as parking. And, you know, as I think about like all the commercial properties along like 38th Avenue, 29th Avenue, 44th, right? All of those commercial properties have a mandatory set of parking. You have to be able to park it. Wadsworth, Kipling being the same. But, but there could be some potential because behind those, 29th, 26th, 44th, 38th, behind those are residential properties. So could it be something where if they work with a neighbor and utilize, not necessarily their property, but a neighbor's property to help with that drainage, that it would, would help with the fee? Or if like several of the commercial properties got together and were able to work with, behind their property line neighbor that has, there's a lot of large lots along all of those roadways. And so I was just wondering if that's something we could consider.
Absolutely. Oh, excuse me. I'll just answer that. Yeah, absolutely. I think any of those kind of unique, out of the box ideas, I think we need to allow time and space to evaluate those. Because again, we're not starting from like a green field here where it's like, well, let's put the drainage here. And then we put the houses just so and the commercial just right. It's really an infill after the fact, trying to figure this stuff out to the best of all of our abilities, private and public. And so any of those chances, we definitely look at that.
Great. And then, you know, 44th Avenue, we just opened a, a new urban renewal area along 44th Avenue. And I wonder if working with the renewal Wheat Ridge would be a way to maybe address some of the financial needs for the 44th Avenue area? And then the only other thing I was wondering, if we do the work to bring homes out of the flood plain, that lowers their homeowner's insurance, right?
Correct.
And so I was wondering, would it be possible to do like a, a one-time, your, like your first year, like share back of that savings? So that then it would go back into the larger fund to work towards, you know, the, the rest of, of the community? And then I had one other question about the, 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 the very large, the 16 million for the, the work that we would have to do in just those four areas. To fund some of that stuff, because it's, it's not necessarily, I mean, it is community-wide, but it's very specifically that we have to work with partners in that. Would that be something that we could look for, like grants to work towards those?
Yes. There are some out there, definitely, that we could evaluate for that. Again, Mile High is probably going to be a good resource for us to use to look at larger, definitely there's low-interest loans for stormwater improvements. But yes, we will definitely evaluate all of those opportunities, whether it's our own system or those regional drainage projects.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I have to send compliments to the staff and to our contractors for the tremendous work you've done. And this is a, a very comprehensive document, still. There's a lot of things that have to, have to happen before we can say this is, this is it. This is, this is the final thing. But as we look forward and looking forward 10 years, it, it seems like we've, we've looked enough at the sort of, okay, it's just one part of the city. It's a whole city and the different things that have to happen in different parts of the city. And how do we pay for that? And I think that there's a mention in the staff memo about how this, thinking about stormwater drainage in Wheat Ridge goes back a little further than just 10 years. It goes back to the 70s, I guess. And, and so this is a problem that, it is a problem that the city's been facing for a very long time. And I think we finally are in a point where we may be able to get a handle on it. I'd want, I'd like to talk about the utility, the, the idea of setting up a utility and then how that, how that's going to work going forward. But first, I do have a couple of specific questions on, first off, on Clearvale, an area that is very much in, in District 4. And can you tell me if the addition of the $15 million worth of projects that were up there earlier and the Clearvale and Lena Gulch project are considered two completely separate?
They are, yeah. So Mile High looks at those as two separate facilities or drainage ways. And so they have separate studies for each of those, just as they do for the Sloane's Lake area.
Well, maybe I missed a thing.
Oh, sorry.
Lena Gulch and Clearvale are one, one sort of thing that's under the Mile High Flood District.
Correct, yes.
And then the other projects, 48th Avenue and some of the other ones are, are considered the city of Wheat Ridge's own.
Correct, yes.
And so when we look at, at those two long, long, longer-term projects and then we look at some of the things that happen, that will need to happen in the near future, I'm, I'm just not getting a sense of, we, we, in our capital improvement budget, we're looking at one thing for 25 and 26 and how that fits in with, with these longer 10-year projects. Can you kind of just walk us through the, the immediate funding needs? And then, you know, obviously being able to generate that, that kind of funding for these 10-year long-term projects?
Certainly. So I think this little chart here on this page probably shows it best. So the, the list of projects that, where it says capital projects are internal to Wheat Ridge, that Mile High would say, not ours, not part of a larger drainage, it's more localized, therefore you're on your own. And that's primarily what's been identified through the master plan. So all of those costs would be on us. We are proposing right now a 10-year timeframe to build out that list of projects for the 15 million. Just in talks with Mile High Flood District, we would, and, and they would like to take on the improvements in this reach of Clear Creek and this reach of Lena Gulch over that next 10-year period as well, where they would likely be able to come up with their match at the same time, within that timeframe. So that's what we've identified. And then to Councilmember Ohm's point, right now, at this point, that $15.1 million has not been prioritized. So our very immediate needs of that list, I would say before we even get to those infrastructure projects, we need to look at our existing system and repair. So if we, if we had to, we're not seen to the point of, you know, again, significant property and property or structural damage other than in, let's say, Clearvale, if we were to get that level of storm, again, if, so we had to prioritize it, be into that existing system repair at this point. I'm sorry, it was a long-winded answer, but hopefully that's.
Well, and that's, it gives everybody a sense of the scale of what we're, what we're talking about here. Do we, have we had a chance to, do we know where all the pipes are, I guess the question?
No, we don't. So I'll, I can have Melissa speak to that a little bit more. So we used again our GIS data and did the best we can. But I know that they put in a lot, like basically made some assumptions in what was going on between to connect certain pipes, certain sizes. And so we do have follow-up work to do to go out and again, kind of inventory the system, get better GIS data to have a more robust system than what we do now.
Yeah. So we actually went through the entire system of the, the city's existing GIS system and looked at each component of the infrastructure manhole, the different pipes. Some of them had a pipe size of zero, so we knew that that was an error. And so we highlighted all the areas that we thought didn't align with what should be in place, sent a list to the city staff. They went through it as best they could to identify the specific lines that they knew the sizes of and the locations of. And so we went back to the GIS map and updated that. And then the areas where we couldn't identify what was there, we kind of just drew, we made some assumptions based what was in between and on both sides and the existing manholes that were there. And so we tried to connect the entire system for the city of Wheat Ridge. But yes, there's a lot of unknowns there.
So this, in, in, this is sort of the immediate future, determining what pipes are where and which ones go to which place. When, when that work is completed, will we have a, a, a good map that in five, 10 years, somebody can say, oh, we've got a problem with the pipe bend and we know that it runs right here?
Yes. So I think, you know, this would, we're hoping to get after the majority of the significant upsizing projects. The, and then going forward would be more operational maintenance costs associated with the program. But I think also one of the, you know, like, like I mentioned earlier with the what's up Wheat Ridge or the comments we got back from folks, a lot of it was nuisance flooding. So it's either sitting on the edge of their property, like it's out at the curb, if there was curb. But a lot of our streets just don't have curb and gutter. And so, and they're very flat. So we have a lot of situations where people reported issues, but it's not necessarily affecting their property, but it might be icing up in the streets. So I think long-term, our plan is try to address those through our pavement management program. So either creating more curb and gutter in places, not necessarily the whole street or long areas, but where we know we have problem areas is to try and address that, adding some inlets to the system to try and get some of that water away at certain locations. So I think that's more the long-term effort that we need to look at. Or once we get through this first iteration, if you will, over the next 10 years, how do we start to get after those little bit smaller localized problems?
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. So I have several questions. First off, surprised to see that we haven't done a study of this nature since 1979, which was only 10 years after our incorporation. So that kind of begs the question of like, how did we get here and why do we have so much deferred maintenance? And why wasn't it prioritized, particularly if they said that about 50 projects were identified in 1979 and yet only half of them potentially had work done?
Yeah. I think, you know, again, other priorities have come up throughout the year or over the last 30 to 40 years that have not been able to allow for as much focus on the stormwater system. I think, you know, it was working and that's part of the problem to Councilmember Ohm's point. It's underground, it's out of sight, and as long as people aren't getting impacted significantly, it tends to be, you don't put as much effort into it necessarily. And I think trying to look at it from more of a overall asset management and now seeing the, the problems we've experienced over the last couple of years, I think it's more coming to light. And so I, we are a little bit behind, definitely, and, and probably should have been doing more maintenance along the way. So I, I think that's the best probably explanation of why we didn't probably get after this sooner.
May I could add to that just a little bit too? Since I've been here, since 2002, we've, I think we've addressed, brought this to previous councils two or three times to ask about a, a funding source for it and just never got any consensus to do that. So it's been brought up numerous times and we couldn't get any consensus in the past.
So I mean, I see that the 15 million, I mean, that's a significant cost. And even with the match of, of the 16 million, is it because it was such an exorbitant cost that it wouldn't be able to be allocated in budget? And so it's just kind of been a reactive as opposed to proactive kind of situation?
Yes.
Okay. And so my next question, and I, I actually wanted to ask about the yearly pipe cleaning and televising program. Is that cost built in or, or would that be a part of the utility fee? Can you just explain that a little bit more?
Sure. All of these costs, that total of the 15 million, so the operation and maintenance would be a part of the overall program.
Okay. And so that, then that's like moving forward, the plan to keep a better eye on.
Correct.
Gauge. Okay. Any type of, so then my next question is about this map, how the improvement zone, so it's one, listed one through six. And we've already kind of gone over this in a previous study session. And that's kind of the order of the prioritization.
Not necessarily. So I, I know you guys have seen the one through six. That's why I use that. But that's not necessarily the order. I think this, again, would come down to looking at it in terms of what's failing and trying to address, trying to move to a more proactive approach that we can save the ones that are close to failing. And then if we do have ones that have failed, have to have a more reactive, but don't necessarily use that. I think that would be our cleaning and televising. We might do that, but not necessarily starting with one. We'd probably focus on those problem areas.
Okay, yeah. Because I just identified like in Area 5 in particular, you know, there's a lot of areas that need significantly larger pipes. But if it's in the, the fifth, you know, priority, it's just kind of.
Adds a question of how, how it's gauged.
And of course, District 4 particularly suffers from being next to Clear Creek and affected by a lot of the, the flood plain. So additional insurance costs and also the storm and drainage issues. And so I think overall, you know, I'm really uncomfortable with the idea of a fee. And like, we can always argue semantics as opposed to whether it's a tax versus a fee. And, you know, I think we've done a significant disservice to the population and our constituency in letting it get to this place where we've had such significant deferred maintenance of, of a basic responsibility of, of a government entity that we need to particularly add a fee. And I, I mean, I understand we do it with water. And so I guess my, that begs my next question of as far as like who's going to administer the fee? How is that going to be captured? And if there's been any consideration of, of that?
Yeah, I think that'd be part of the rate study that we'd evaluate is, you know, how would that, all the logistics of that? So the billing, all of that would be part of that rate study. We have some ideas that we've talked about, but not really fleshed those out at this point.
Okay. And so like if we move forward with this, this is just. Okay, and so like if we move forward with this, this is just to say like, okay, yeah, we have a huge problem, we recognize that the cost is pretty astronomical, and we'll be moving forward with the rate study, and at that point in time, we can kind of address and, and study whether that's something that we support. So this is just kind of, yeah.
That's all we're asking for tonight, is to take this next step, then with bring that information back with a fee, and you guys can look at that and determine if it's makes sense or not.
I just have a quick question about also, like, if you find an almost failing pipe, like, what is the repair, what does it look like to repair something of that nature as opposed to replace?
Sure. Yeah, so as I mentioned, we did this, so a lining, you can actually line pipe, and it's a hard, well, it goes in almost like a sock, if you will, and then it gets expanded and then it hardens as they run water through it, or it's ultraviolet light is, is pressed in there. And so then it creates almost like a shell, if you will, within that existing pipe and creates, covers any of those smaller holes. So this picture is an example, where you can see there on the left, the whole bottom is gone. This one is on, was on Hoy Court where we actually saw the street starting to cave in. This is too far gone. So that's where we needed to dig up and actually remove the existing pipe and replace it with a new one. There, the one on 32nd Avenue was such, there was some erosion going on in the bottom, and I, this picture on the left here, this is how we found it, was this curb was sinking there on the left picture, and so we're like, oh my, what's going on? So this one was salvageable in that there was still enough pipe left that we could line it with that liner. So we're hoping, again, to try and catch some of those, and this one was far less costly in this segment than some of those others.
And what, what does the lifeline look like for a repair as opposed to a full replace?
Those, I believe, I don't know if you guys have any more experience, probably 10 to 15 years for, okay, for a repair. For a new pipe, if we were, most of this was installed in like, I would say, the 60s and 70s, probably for a CMP, depending on the corrosiveness of the, the environment, probably 30 to 40 years.
You good? Thank you. Oh, Mayor Protem Stites, I didn't have you on my list.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just, one question, have you guys looked at surrounding cities and cities in the Denver metro area? Have you already kind of established, are there other cities that offer this or have this fee? Is this something we'd be unique in doing?
Yes, and I, we'll do, we'll do some analysis as part of that rate study as well, but as far as I know, every other city in the Front Range has, had a, has a stormwater utility fee. I heard that the city and county of Broomfield, though, just recently enacted it at a particular rate. So we'll do a comparison to rates at other communities as well when we bring that rate study information back. So just to show where would we be in relative to other communities.
Okay, thank you. This is definitely something I think we need, I think it was something that maybe in 1979, you know, things were 10 years new, you know, it's not something they needed, maybe even in the 80s they didn't need it, but certainly as you're walking down the street on 32nd and 44th and you're watching streets collapse, that's a pretty massive thing, that's something we need to pay for. Can I make a consensus, Mr. Mayor, or do you?
I have a couple of questions myself, if everyone has gotten their questions. Thank you, Director, and, and your consultants for a great, great presentation. In general, do we, are we able to do this all with a gravity flow within the city?
Yes, we have no listations associated with our stormwater system.
Great. And in your budgeting, have you generally figured corrugated metal pipe or RCP?
Um, yeah, so all the repairs that we've done so far have, we've replaced like with likes, we've replaced with corrugated metal pipe, but I believe our stormwater estimates do they through RCP? RC, RCP.
Oh, it is? Okay. So that, which gives you.
Even longer life.
Considerably longer life than, than, than metal pipe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For that clarification.
Okay, thank you, great, great discussion. The main question is, do we want to continue this discussion along the lines of creating a, a utility? And answering the questions to go along with it, looks like we do have consensus to do that, so thank you very much, appreciate that. We will now go into our item, agenda item number two. This is a discussion of the residential waste engagement, the final update and recommendations. Mr. Call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Ann Schilling, our Assistant City Manager, is going to introduce this item.
Excellent.
And Mary is also here, and we have some of our sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee still.
Get my stuff out of the way here.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, we're excited to be here tonight. You might recall that this topic first came up about two and a half years ago, and then the contract was awarded to HR, HDR, excuse me, about a year and a half ago, with the goal of really, really, really leaning into residential engagement, seeing what our residents care about as it relates to residential waste. So I think you'll find tonight that the, the recommendations are, are actionable, they're grounded in reality, they sound like our Wheat Ridge residents. So I am excited, I'm going to hand it over now to Mary to, to get us started.
Yes, thank you, Mary Ann, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us tonight. We're excited to be here presenting our final update and the final recommendations of the Residential Waste Engagement Project. This represents a culmination of all the work and engagement that has gone on since we kicked the project off last year in July. And so in this presentation, we will focus on kind of a recap of all the engagement that has happened, and we'll go through the five final recommendations that we are recommending to move forward with. And so you'll see as we go through the council or we go through the presentation, we will hit on each of the five recommendations, and then we've also identified what we're calling the immediate next step, and that's what we are going to be seeking your feedback and your consensus on at the end of this presentation. And so I'm joined here tonight with our HDR team that we've worked on this project with. I've got Tara Battali beside me, and then we are joined by Jessica Lally online. And with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Tara for our presentation.
Just a few minutes to get back to Slide 1, but hello, Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having us. Again, my name's Tara Battali, I'm with HDR, we're an engineering and architecture firm, but I'm not an engineer nor am I an architect. I run our strategic communications program, so what makes us pretty unique is that we have a full-service public relations and marketing and engagement team embedded within an engineering firm. So we talk the talk and walk the walk, so to speak, as it relates to engineering and infrastructure. So thank you for having me. Jessica Lally is online, she is one of our solid waste and recycling planners and has helped with, with the development of these recommendations as it relates to some of the technical efforts. So as we move through the presentation, thank you for allowing us to be here, we'll give a quick reminder of the overview and the project goals. We'll also talk about how we broke this out into our phased approach and then our results, which again, we presented to you all earlier this year, so we'll, we'll breeze through that pretty quickly and get to the exciting stuff, which is the Phase 3 results and the survey that happened over the summer, and then what those recommendations are, and then Mary will give an outline of next steps and we'll go through the actionable steps that we would like you to consider. And then, of course, any questions that you might have. So a reminder, our project overview really is aimed at understanding the public's opinion about waste management system, about the open market system, about potential changes and what those options could be. And it was really big picture, we really wanted to dig into the, the high level and the lowest hanging fruit efforts that could come out of programs like this. And those were really grounded in four key goals, so maximize our resident engagement. We wanted to reach a broad spectrum, and again, this is just focused on residential waste as a reminder, not commercial or other efforts, but just purely residential, as you heard from a number of the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee members. We also wanted it to be inclusive and accessible, and that is by way of our tools. So we did a variety of digital and in-person engagement efforts, and this one is really key, because usually we're here to educate and advocate for an infrastructure project, but we wanted to remain neutral as we moved through this engagement, to make sure that we're offering clear, unbiased outcomes of that engagement. So our questions were not leading, we didn't try to convince people to think a certain way, and so HDR was really able to be that third-party facilitator or mediator, so to speak. And then informative, how can we use this as an opportunity to educate people on our current programs and our systems? How can we make sure that they understand how the open market works currently and some of the impacts to change? So in, in the heart of the project outcome is to empower all of you on city council to feel confident in further direction on waste management decisions and approaches. We didn't go into this with any preconceived ideas of what that might look like, what those outcomes or recommendations could be, it was truly a clean slate. And I think what you'll see in our final report and our recommendations is really customizable to Wheat Ridge. Jessica and I and the rest of the team didn't sit with a, a go-to template that we use with other cities, we really started from that clean canvas and made sure that we asked the questions that resonated with Wheat Ridge residents, but also that our recommendations were absorbable and truly reflective of the community efforts. So through these phases, the first one was analysis and develop the engagement plan. Then we moved quickly into understanding hauling options. So this is where we went to in-person open house and unveiled all of the potential options that are outside of open market. And then this past summer went into Phase 3, where be based on the Phase 2 engagement, how, what kind of questions did we need to dig into even more? And we found that we needed to talk really specific about waste programs like yard waste, like composting, like large item recycling, and not so much the actual overhaul of the entire system. And then we're here in Phase 4, our final step, to unveil these recommendations, and during, the outreach during these phases included promotional materials, as hopefully you all saw, digital surveys, we did that open house in Phase 2 earlier this year, pop-up events, so we went to where people were already gathering to get information, and then of course, briefings to all of you and our committee. So quickly, the results of Phase 1 and 2, you've seen this before, but nearly 700 people reached with nearly 900 comments, and this map is to show the pins of where we heard from people, so we're really proud of the geographic dispersion of our engagement, we felt like we did hit all corners of the city, and so that was important for us to, again, achieve that goal of being as inclusive as we can. The three takeaways from that first phase is there was an even split pretty much down the center of people in support of and in opposition to changing the current open market system. So that was really telling for us, because it allowed us to tailor what we needed to do in our, our third phase. And when we asked specifically about if this system works well currently, 41 said no, 15 were indifferent, and 44 said yes. So it really indicates that 56% of people maybe want change, but maybe they don't want change to the whole system. Maybe there's programming we can do in a phased approach that would allow us to see some sustainable efforts and some recycling and waste diversion successes, but not necessarily overhauling the system at this point. And as one of our public commenters said, choice and cost were two top factors that respondents really valued when they were looking at what was important to their waste service. So that also came into play as we dug into what we wanted to ask over this past summer. So our methodology or purpose of, of Phase 3 was to understand the preferred type of trash and recycling services specifically, not an overhaul of the entire system. And what would the, what would, knowing that cost was that number, one of my, the number one priorities, how did that in, in, or influence the recommendations as it relates to some of the programming that we had talked about? So some of our questions, what's your interest in curbside versus drop-off collection, especially if it was free or had a minimal fee, or if we could offset that cost with other partners? Collection frequency, so we, we heard a lot about the frequency of, of the current collection system and what their interests might be on some of that yard waste or large item in particular. How would fees impact participation? Of course, if it's free, we saw some pretty excited results, but we wanted to be sure that we were clear on what those priorities were. So the, some of the key results, and again, there's a full summary in the final report for Phase 3, we won't go into every single statistic, but there's plenty for you to dig into if you would like in the final report. But 70% support financial incentives for decreasing trash, such as a pay-as-you-throw system. So that was an important outcome of Phase 3. 78% would recycle more if services were included at no additional cost. Certainly, that's an incentive, right? But it also has a sustainable and environmental impact by diverting waste out of the landfill and into a different system. So while we know people like free stuff, we also wanted to be sure that we understood if they would be interested in it at all, would you be interested in recycling, period? So that was the heart of that question. And then 59% were interested in a drop-off facility for large items and 40% for yard waste. So again, you heard from some of the public commenters that this is also of high interest to come out of those questions. So with that came these final recommendations, we're going to go one by one through these, so I won't read these all now, but these five were, again, customized based on the engagement we've had here. So Jessica and I really dug in with staff into the data and the results and wanted to think critically about what the community wants to see as it relates to recycling and waste diversion, what is achievable in the short term and long term, and from that, we developed a tiered system for each of these recommendations. So on the next slide, we broke down what those tiers would mean in terms of investment or resources. So Tier 1 would be utilizing existing staff, maybe a little bit of funding, and you'll see why as we dig into these recommendations. Tier 2 would be maybe the need for an additional feasibility study, like a permanent drop-off facility would certainly need more work, and it would definitely need more funding and likely coordination of resources outside of city staff. And Tier 3 are activities that require a longer-term effort and staff either dedicated to full new programs or a long-term consulting type of support system. So, recommendation one, and you heard a little bit about this, and I know you're all familiar with it, but expand on TLC cleanup day programming and other annual events. So in our survey, we really heard that we love the events, we just want more of them, we want them geographically dispersed, and half of residents really wanted more options. And so what it is partnering with local works and other organizations like Paint Care and Spring Back to host more robust cleanup days. So not just the frequency, but also the types of items that are being collected at those days. So that leads into the next step, that staff needs to evaluate and understand cost estimates for increasing that programming, including locations and what those potential new materials could look like. And that level of effort is a Tier 1. It's because it's already a formulated program and it's just expanding, existing staff are already in place to achieve some of that expansion, and it doesn't involve a long-term site dedication. Again, it's just that expanding an existing program, but there may need a, a little bit of budget increase for those partnerships, but again, a Tier 1 in the sense that there not, there doesn't have to be an additional study or dedicated staff hired for that particular effort. So the action here is to support staff evaluating the cost associated with it. So there would, in all of these recommendations, you'll see that there is a next step in it for you all to make a decision in a future meeting. This is just an action we need for staff to continue to evaluate what that cost would look like to expand these programs. And within this recommendation, there will likely be tiered or prioritized recommendations in and of itself. Next recommendation, implement a permanent drop-off, drop-off site for yard waste and specialized materials for recycling. So why? The respondents of our survey indicated that they would participate in a drop-off site if more material streams were available, so not just one particular item, but a multitude of items that you would potentially want or need to recycle or haul off within your home. And so what is that? Exploring a site that residents can consider, or that you all would consider, and materials that expand that collection include yard waste, flexible films, block styrofoam, mattresses, tires. So these are things that are quite large, they're harder to recycle on your own, so this type of facility will really take a lot out of our landfills and into recycling centers and partnering with those organizations, again, at the permanent drop-off. and partnering with those organizations again at the permanent drop-off site for adequate recycling of those, of those harder to process materials. So the next step, creating an actual implementation plan to describe what all of that programming really looks like for the new drop-off site. You would need to identify through a feasibility study, a site selection or evaluation to address zoning, accessibility, obviously transportation, the staff needed to run the site. And so with all of that, the level of effort is our tier, one of our only tier three recommendation. It's more complex to implement itself. You know, you would have wanted at least one permanent site to start with and see what that popularity looks like. But that feasibility study can further expand the public engagement too, to really understand people's sentiment in terms of location as well. So action, does council support staff evaluating the cost of conducting that feasibility study? The availability of any grants, technical assistance? And of course, we would return to a future meeting to expand on what that looks like.
I'm sorry, just one second. Mr. Mayor? Because the, because of the, of the way that there's five separate things. And I have like a few questions for this one. I feel like it would be more efficient to be able to have discussion on each one as we go through them. Can we do that just that way tonight?
Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't to sort of discuss these one, one at a time as we go.
And then we can do, take consensus at the end on each one.
Sure.
Okay. So we'll go back to, this is expanding TLC cleanup days, programming and other annual events. Would you like to speak to that?
I do have a, just one quick question on that one. So would there, could, so the TLC days tend to be in like different districts and, and neighborhoods. And, but I think with something like e-waste, that could maybe be something that we could potentially have a long-term at, at city hall drop-off maybe instead of having to add that to, to like a large item pickup. And so I just wonder if that was maybe something that if we get consensus to move forward with this, if that's maybe something we could consider in the evaluating the costs kind of piece?
Sure. Yeah, I think that's definitely something that we could look into and we could look into that as part of the, maybe the next recommendation of establishing a permanent drop-off site. And you know, we, we called out TLC cleanup days just because it is an existing program. That would be a little easier to expand, but it does say and other annual events. Or that could be other regular easy to drop off things. So I think the other events is, can be a little bit of a catch-all for some of those smaller, maybe easier to implement programs.
Thank you.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. On this one, sorry, I've got something in my throat. I, I just wanted, I guess my comment, I really TLC days is I think something, one of the things that makes Wheat Ridge really great. Neighbors and neighborhoods like really, I mean, I'll tell you what, my neighborhood is abuzz the three days before our TLC day. Like, and it's competitive to get there. And, and it was really developed out of building like resident capacity and like strong neighborhoods. And so I really strongly support this recommendation because I think it builds on a lot of things that are important in our city and to our residents. And as we heard from our speakers tonight too, like the closer we can bring it to people where they live, the more likely they are to participate. So if what we're trying to do is do waste diversion, I think that if we could really be looking at expanding TLC, both maybe getting some more sites, but then also bringing in those other waste diversions. And I'm just going to throw in there as my little like add-on. I think it'd be really great to have a wood chipper come in for one of them because there's a lot of large branches. And if we could actually like mulch in sight in neighborhoods, like my neighbors would take their mulch with them. Anyway, just throwing that in as like a little suggestion as part of TLC. But I just want to say I strongly support this and I, I like the idea. The e-waste is a specialized type of waste diversion that usually requires a partner to be successful in that. So if that's a little bit harder to pull off in, in the more micro neighborhoods. But I think we could be doing a lot more with TLC for waste diversion. And so I strongly recommend, I will be supporting this in consensus.
Great. And you'll see in a future or an upcoming recommendation, an overarching marketing and increased advertising as it relates to potential future events or current. So that's one reason why we were going to go through all of them. So just if we defer to a future recommendation, then just note, note that.
Counselor Snell.
Thank you. A couple of questions around TLC and it may be a local works question. Mary Ann, you may know. Do you know if there's been an increase in the dumpster day grant program? If there's been an increase in applications for that?
I actually don't know that.
No deal. I was thinking, you know, the TLC, that's thinking about the local works budget and how those are funded. The grant, you know, the dumpster grants are pre-individualized. Several neighbors get together and get a dumpster delivered versus a dumpster being delivered to a central location in each district. So with this, my next question is with this, if we decided to, and we might, I mean, probably aren't at to this point yet. If we decided to increase the TLC cleanup days, would that, would those funds, would that impact local works and how they're, and they're budgeting?
We've made some recent changes with that where we brought more of that back in-house. And it's, it's managed to implement it out of code enforcement and a police department. Local works helps with those events, but we did increase our budget over the last couple of years for those. And I think they are being used. But yeah, so it would impact more of the general fund budget probably unless we, yep.
Is there further discussion on recommendation number one to expand, expand the TLC? Do we have consensus to move that ahead? So we do. Okay. Thank you.
To evaluate further.
To move ahead with the evaluation. Okay.
Yes.
So evaluate the cost.
There's our action for the second recommendation. And yeah, just that refresher, the permanent drop-off site. So this is that tier three.
Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Jefferson County does have a slash station and we contribute to that too, right? Like there was like a one-time contribution or something. When they were first getting it going, we've put money towards that. So they have a permanent slash station. And so, so my question is, do we necessarily need a, like a slash station? Or, you know, or is there like, are there like part? And if we don't, are there partners we can work with like, I think it's like, it's like COCO or something, COCO. It, it's like a compost Colorado or it's a COC or something like that, compost Colorado. They're a small business in Colorado. And they do things such as the not easy to recycle materials such as styrofoam and the film and then also food waste. And so I just wonder like if, if we, I just wonder if this particular one could be split up potentially into like two different, like there's slash station. Yes, we have one, a permanent one in Jefferson County. But then there are not really very easy ways to recycle materials such as styrofoam, flexible film. And would we potentially partner with like a small business to work on that? Like, and if that's something that evaluating that cost, that would be like a hired contractor to, to do that. And so I'm just wondering if, if we get consensus for that, if that's something we can ask the contractor to potentially separate those?
Yeah, I want to take, sure. Yeah, I can take a crack at that. Yes. And I think when we were putting this recommendation together, especially when we were looking at the, the specialized recycling materials portion of it, we understand that there's also the Rooney Road Recycling Center that takes certain things or certain things that you can have picked up curbside. So we're, we would be trying to look at what are the gaps and how could we fill those if we were looking at a permanent drop-off station? And I think certainly if we move forward with evaluating the cost of what that could look like, we could put together a couple of different scenarios of collecting, you know, X versus Y and what the different costs would be.
Yeah, thank you. I just, you know, my concern is that if we already have, I, like I get, sure, everybody wants you to come to the door and pick it up from the door from you, right? But, but there are opportunities in our community where, with the slash station where, you know, you can proactively go to the slash station. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, I, Rooney Road is one of those areas where I've taken the chemicals. And I know that City of Lakewood and Arvada have some type of partnership with Rooney Road. And they, and, and I've also taken foam, the sustainability recycling has an onsite styrofoam shredder. And honestly, Arvada has a partnership with them. And so is that something we could look into?
Yeah, I think we could also look into partnerships and whether that would maybe make more sense for people to just use those versus a drop-off site.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mayor. On this one, to echo Counselor Ohm, this type of thing seems more like it would be strengthened regional partnership. This is the size of our municipality is, it just doesn't seem to quite have the, like the payoff for what it would take for the dedicated like land use and programming. And so I'm not afraid of a tier three commitment, but I think for this one, it just doesn't seem like the, that it would be like having the mitigative efforts that would be intended. And I think there are pieces in here that could get taken, taken down to the communications and promotions piece. And so I here would like to see us look at what are, what are areas where we could be strengthening partnerships with our neighboring communities and, and then communicating, doing better communications, which we'll talk about in a minute, about how, you know, individuals and businesses tying this into our green business program, how, how we can be doing more waste diversion that way. But I'm, I'm not inclined to support like the, the programmatic and like land use dedication it would take for this. So anyway, so this is the only recommendation I'm, I'm not super excited about. Thanks.
Counselor Weaver.
I agree with my colleagues on this one. I think it's better regionally done. I do think that, that we could do a much better job of having this information on the sustainability page of where we can go to recycle these things, because I think this is kind of low-hanging fruit of just telling people where we can take our, our styrofoam and some of these regional hubs and what they take and what they don't take. And that would be great information to just have for people. Thanks. So I, I, I don't support this.
Counselor Gosner.
Thank you. I'm supportive of the comments that have already been made. And I also just off the cuff, we used to have a composting program through scraps, I believe. Okay. Is that still available? Cause I just haven't seen a lot of information and I participated in that for a little while, but it was, I had a lot more food waste than they could handle.
I had a question about this one also, and I wondered, we didn't include a, if we have a dedicated drop-off center, why we wouldn't include glass and paper and, and the other things. Lakewood has the Coyle Street Recycling Center, seems to do a lot of, a lot of work over there. They get my business. I'm, I'm one that likes to take my own. So is that, is there a barrier to doing that or is there a reason that we didn't incorporate that into a dropout center?
Yeah. So it goes into another recommendation that Jessica, my colleague on the, on the phone will be talking about. And that is the statewide initiatives, the EPR. So the extended producer responsibility legislation and policy efforts. So you're getting a little bit into why we only put harder to recycle items at the permanent drop-off because there is going to be some statewide policy that comes out that might increase the residential recycling of more traditional items, curbside, that the producers of those products actually pay into. So Jessica's going to dive into that a little bit more, but I hope that answers your question.
Well, it doesn't, it does if you want curbside recycling, you know? Not everybody wants curbside recycling, you know? So.
Noted. And I, it almost seems like it deserves the mashup of the future recommendation here on the marketing and public relations increase. But then also recommendation one of the other events and how the regional partnerships could kind of blend these recommendations together.
Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to, to ask if, if we don't have consensus to move forward as the recommendations as presented, if potentially we would have consensus to move forward with a tier one recommendation, which would be to look at building partnerships within our community that, with resources that are already available to us.
Sure. Yes, I think that'd be great.
Do you want me to ask for an actual consensus?
No, I, I was just going to, going to do that. So the question that we have written for us is do we want to evaluate the cost of conducting a feasibility study and, and whether there are grants and technical assistance that could be utilized to complete the study? And that, so that's a tier three opportunity? I mean, that's, that's really hard work to, to evaluate that. Okay.
Yeah. So recommendation two, as it's written, would be a tier three.
A tier three. So do we want to engage in a tier three effort to study this? Doesn't look like we do. Okay. How about a tier one study or something to evaluate partnerships? Looks like we do have consensus on that. Okay. Continue.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to recommendation three, evaluate seasonal yard waste and expanded large item collection. So this came from the survey responses that residents asked the city to explore more curbside programs to increase diversion and equitable access to services for residents related to these particular types of items. So we heard about yard waste earlier, but also that large item collection. And curbside is important here because transportation barriers were a key challenge for residents in the surveys as it related to large items and yard waste. So we heard the 28 bag comment earlier, but large items like furniture, tires, those types of things. There is a transportation barrier too. So based, so the, the what would be the implemental, implement seasonal yard waste collection and service in the spring and fall and expand the frequency of large item collection events from once a year to quarterly, which was pretty attractive to the community at a high level when we asked that question. And so the next step would be to procure a third-party entity to conduct an evaluation of collection options for these programs to understand what those costs are, but also the diversion impacts. So it would dig deeper into the community engagement we did at this kind of higher level. And it would dig more into the actual diversion impacts. So getting into the exact types of large items. And so just more detail related to the high-level questions that we asked in phase three. The level of effort is a tier two. So it's not as big as the feasibility study for the site collection, the permanent site collection. But we still would want to understand the costs and the operational considerations as it relates to these two things. City staff would oversee the study and provide input. And the city would need to incorporate budget for this particular study, but not necessarily for what that, that study would then come with costs to actually implement what that program could look like. So it's a next phase to dive deeper into these two seasonal yard waste and a large item collection options at that curbside level in particular. So council action, does council support staff evaluating the cost of expanding the existing large item collection efforts to a quarter, quarterly? As well as the costs and any grant or technical assistance opportunities to conduct a feasibility study on seasonal yard waste collection? And of course, return to a meeting with what that plan would look like.
Counselor Weaver and then Counselor Hoppy.
I'm not terribly supportive of this at curbside. I'll be honest with you. I, I think we have a lot of regional options. And I, and I guess I, I, I'm trying to understand, because a person was talking about leaves tonight. We've talked about slash, we've talked about branches, we've talked about chipping. And all of these things happen throughout the year at the various levels. So when you say seasonal yard waste, are we talking? I'm, I'm not for having this stuff picked up at, at people's curb. But are you talking all of it or what specifically when you say yard waste?
Jessica, do you want to chime in on this specific materials that are yard waste?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Thank you. Yep. We're talking about all leaves, branches, grass, flowers, within a certain size limit, obviously, but anything that kind of fits in a, in a cart.
Okay. Again, I guess I would put this back up. I would be interested in a tier one effort, but I I feel like we have places throughout the season that we can take things of different. But again, you just have to know where they're taking them and how they need to be packaged to be taken. And so I would be for making sure people knew of all of those things, but I'm not for curbside thing.
And if I may, in the study, one of the things that we heard the most from people and we'll hear a little bit on the education piece is that the reason people don't participate in existing programs right now as it stands is because they don't know about it or they can't get to it. And so the transportation part, I do want to make a note, is a large barrier for a lot of the residents who would like to participate otherwise.
And the crux of this recommendation specifically based on what we heard in that survey.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first piece, the large item to four times a year and evaluating the cost of that can literally be done in 10 minutes. You take the cost that it takes us, the once a year, times it by four. So just saying.
There's a discount there.
And I support going quarterly with that. I also hear, I hear the transportation piece. Like I hear that. I don't necessarily support twice a year at curb yard waste pickup, however, and let's be clear too, if transportation is an issue, it also potentially, you don't have a chainsaw to cut the branch into the lengths that it needs to be cut into to go into the into the bin anyways and that kind of thing. So there are potentially other barriers in there besides just transportation. And so I just wonder if this is a piece where we can work on, you know, like we're working on snow buddies, right? So if this would be something where we could buddy up with the snow buddies to be leaf buddies, right? And so then it would be the snow buddies and then like the leaf buddies and we could do something like that. And I would support that. I would support a tier one, like Councilwoman Weaver said, I would support a tier one level of effort on that to be able to kind of put that together. Because, and it's not that I will not support at curb pickup in the future, but the next three to four years, our budget doesn't have it. So how do we do this while we're waiting for our budget to have it is where I'm at with that.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was going to, I agree with like the large item pickup. If we can have that more than once a year, that'd be really nice. Because I am actually one of those people that doesn't necessarily have a transportation barrier, but I don't have a car large enough for some of those items. And so I'm having to rely on people with trucks or trailers to come and help me. But it is also one of those, like I'd rather us evaluate if we could potentially expand the TLC program to include either yard waste or those larger items and if we're going to be doing that more frequently, if that kind of covers this ground as well as additional educational pieces with partnerships or regional efforts that already exist instead of duplicating because our budget is something to take into consideration moving forward.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. Agreeing kind of hybridizing. I like the idea of increasing the frequency of the large item pickup just because, you know, the times when I need a large item pickup don't just fall in the same month of the year. So even if it isn't like a true, you know, doubling or quadrupling of the program, offering it a couple of different times a year, I think just might be more convenient for people. And I agree with what Councilmember Dozeman just said. I like hybridizing the yard waste with the TLC and really looking at sort of the seasonality of that. Excuse me. But I'm also really cognizant that we do have people in our community that have real needs and don't have access to transportation. So I wonder if there isn't, I don't know exactly how to go about this, but if there isn't a way of looking at a program for, you know, like qualifying households who, you know, put in a request to, you know, sort of you're talking about leaf buddies. I was like crap that falls in your yard buddies, whether it's snow or leaves.
Branch buddies.
Yeah, yeah. But it's, you know, it's actually getting stuff like off your property and a lot of our waste providers, like they they will for a fee take a large item for you, like mine does and my neighbors who's on a different service. So that, you know, it's available at a cost, but I'm wondering if maybe that's something the idea committee couldn't take a look at, which would be like, what are some some programs that we could provide for people who have like access to barriers to some of this programming we're talking about and other options? So to summarize, I definitely like more times a year that we're offering large item pickup. I would push the waste into option one to really incorporate it strongly in the TLC, get it into the neighborhoods. And then maybe have the idea committee take a look at what are some different like ways we could address barriers, like cost barriers that our households have to participate in the programming we're talking about.
Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Few years ago, I decided to convert some turf into some more drought-resistant turf and so in the end, I ended up giving away most of the sod that I wasn't crazy about, which was great, but then I had to go and get a truck, a big box truck. And I took all my waste, I drove it all the way up to Commerce City and then that went to A1 Organics and they made that into compost. And that was kind of a one-off. But on the other years when I used to have a mature tree, I think I had about 40 bags of leaves and so I just slowly take those to the curb and over the years I knew how to, you know, get those all kind of ground up and I need less bags, but if there was something, and that still went out to the curb, but if there was something that I was able to, I knew that like once a quarter I could go and I could drop off my leaves, I would have been more than happy to do that each and every year. And when it comes to, you know, I agree that, you know, when there's really, really heavy wood, you know, having the right chainsaw and sometimes that just gets to kind of be out of my scope, you know, and I need to hire someone that would do that kind of service. So I just think we need some good options that, you know, for services that we tend to use all kind of all throughout the year, you know, be it, you know, the grass, which unfortunately that usually just goes into the garbage for me. Or the leaves. Thank you.
Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the conversation around the transportation. I'm going to just talk about large item stuff. I think we've hashed out the other, but if you consider someone who lives in an apartment who may or may not have a vehicle and who that apartment complex uses a dump, a trash dumpster service, getting rid of a large item in a smart way is not an easy thing to do. You know, you drive by apartments and see chairs and whatnot just hanging out by trash dumpsters a lot, but if you really want to get rid of it, it's not easy. I've got friends that I help out and so I appreciate the options that have been brought up around like truck and trailer buddies, you know, or something like that to help out with, you know, being able to help out with it. But to Counselor Member Hulteen's suggestion, I do think that's something that, you know, we could look into a little bit with the idea committee and thinking about, you know, who just has a barrier, who really wants to do the right thing, get rid of something and doesn't have a truck or a trailer or a car at all. So appreciate the suggestions, but again, thanks for considering all of our households. So thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess I'm really not not clear on the assumptions on this recommendation. The city should evaluate whether the city should explore more curbside programs to increase diversion. Is, when somebody gets asked that question in one of the surveys, is it they will, somebody will come by and pick up your yard waste or large item for free or is this something that the person would pay for?
So it's a good question. We did ask in the survey and we can dig up the specifics, but we did ask it at a low or no cost. So it was quite broad and to understand what people would be willing to invest in out of their own money or what how their sentiment would be to that diversion if it were free. So we can, I don't have the question in front of me at the moment, but we can find that specific data point. It's in the plan, the document that you see.
And I would simply suggest that if part of the evaluation would be if there was a cost, if there was a fee, you go online, you pick up the phone, I've got an old couch I want to get rid of, can you come by, pick it up? And this service, which I'm assuming would be probably subsidized, would come by and pick it up. And so that kind of, again, the idea of curbside has an appeal, but it's just a question of who's going to pay for it.
Right. And part, I'm sorry, Counselor.
No, no, that's it.
Part of the next level of effort or this tier would be a study to evaluate what those costs and operational needs would be. So we knew, we heard they wanted, the residents wanted it. They wanted it at a more frequent rate. Transportation was the barrier and of course, they would participate if it was a very low cost or no cost. And so that's where this next conduct a study to evaluate those specific costs would come in. Does that make sense? So that would be what the
It absolutely does because you can go online right now and whatever the 1-800-JUNKMAN is and they would come out and they will charge you a certain amount of money to pick up that large item. So if we're going to evaluate, I think probably that would be, you know, one end of the spectrum to the other.
Right. And if that, if you all agree that that next step or recommendation for a study on costs and options were to go through, we would have more of those details. But generally, fair or fee-free services for these items is appealing based on the survey results.
Thank you. I don't see any more questions. I'm going to ask someone else to formulate a consensus because I can't, I can't, I can't see the blackboard here. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And from what I feel like I've heard through the discussion, I would like to ask for consensus to increase large item pickup to include yard waste and the timing of the yard waste with our TLC events, our expanded TLC events that we have consensus for and to look towards some way to help qualifying households with their large item and yard waste.
So we have consensus on that. Thank you very much. Did you pick up most of that?
I think Mary got it.
Increase large item pickup, include yard waste with the TLC events that are, and timing around the time when yard waste would be needed. And then look at some way to help qualifying households with both large item pickups and yard waste.
Okay. Thank you. Terrific. We are moving on to numero cuatro.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And thank you for the suggestion to break these out because they are hybridizing, which is not, which is not a bad thing. This is good. Number four, enhance overall marketing and public relations as it relates to recycling and waste diversion. So why? Many respondents were unfamiliar with or unaware of existing recycling and waste removal programs. So there, that was a specific question that we asked in the survey. Are you aware of the TLC cleanup days? Are you aware of local works partnerships? And there were quite a few who were unaware of that. So this recommendation really is to utilize existing staff and partner and partnering resources to increase the promotion of these events. So whether that be through the committee, neighborhood groups, all of you as ambassadors to these programs, those are the partner resources that we're referencing here. And using in-person and digital marketing tools to capture the diverse demographics of your community. So the next step specifically into that is to reallocate existing staff capacity to add more resources to these efforts. So your existing communications and marketing team along with Mary, how can we just expand what that engagement and marketing and public relations plan looks like? And how we can utilize that with existing staff? Create an informal or even formal agreements. Jessica and I have worked on some efforts outside of Colorado where their memorandum of understanding and they don't have to be that scary, but MOUs at a high level on having other committees or groups or other partnering agencies and nonprofits and hospital community, schools, you know, how can we create agreements with those types of entities to expand the awareness of these programs? And then of course, hiring a third-party vendor or consultant to manage those efforts can certainly be considered if existing staff has maybe a tighter capacity. And when we looked at the level of effort, this one, this one was a funny one, right? Because it's, it could be a tier one or a tier two. So if you utilize your existing communications, marketing and sustainable resources in-house, then that would trigger a tier one because you're shifting time, but not necessarily adding additional funds or staff. Tier two would be if there were to be an RFP for a vendor or consultant or substantial paid advertisements. So if you wanted to really increase traditional marketing, advertising, bus ads, billboards, social media campaigns, like any, anything like that is going to trigger a tier two because of course, those have higher price tags to them. So council effort or action, excuse me, does council support staff working with the communications team to identify ways to increase event marketing and improve all, overall event planning? And of that could be some slight additional funding depending on what those strategies look like to increase the marketing and public relations side of this.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. So yes. I think, you know, first of all, I think we do a good job, but we've got a lot of different things going on and so I kind of have a one and a half tier in that I think we can, I think we can work within our own stuff right now. We're talking about bringing forward more programming and extended programs. I sort of feel like we almost can't even answer this until we're really looking at what else we're going to be bringing online. But I think whatever comes out of this overall is that we need to package it better and look at more like iterative communications and like expanded communications. So I think, you know, definitely tier one and I think to me, just the extent of it, I don't think we can quite answer until we are making decisions about the other things we've discussed tonight. But I mean, at the end of the day, we're only as successful as the people who participate in it. And so participation is the key to the success here and if the intent, you know, is meeting our community's needs that we heard through this extensive community engagement process and also, you know, the needs and desires of our community around waste diversion, we've got to just have a really robust communication. So the extent to which it gets into tier two, I just would defer that until we're having the other discussions about how extensive our programming looks like. So, but heck yeah, is my response.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I'm a tier 1.5 also. I think that, look, when you read through this report, you can see that there was some very successful engagement in our community and some of those tools that were used can also be same tools for marketing pieces. And so, and a lot of that can be done in-house. I don't feel like we should do, hire a third party necessarily right now if that's something we need to do later on down the road. Yes, again, being budget conscious though, I would say that I would be open for a small budget for things like the Gazette, bus benches, things like that in our community. And of course, the budget's already done for next year. So it would be something that would have to come to the following year or in, already in the sustainability's budget that they have. And so so yes, I would be in support of 1.5, tier 1.5.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this item.
And if I may, I failed to, and you hit on it, Counselor Hulteen, but the education piece of this, so it's not just to promote events, but it's to promote recycling at a philosophical level or that sustainability effort as a whole. So even if it's not an event-specific promotion, there are educational opportunities associated with communications staff members being allocated to those engagements. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Counselor Hulteen.
Yeah, just to kind of add a, just a note there for as this moves forward. I think, you know, one of the things that we would hope to be getting as an outcome is, you know, increased improvement. And it would be great to have some sort of dashboard that if we as a city are, you know, putting some resources behind these programs, it would be really neat. neat if we had somewhere that we're reporting back out to our community that through this we've diverted this many, you know, tons of this and that. And so, I think creating those metrics, so people like, you know, actually make the connection between the messaging, the participation, and the impact, I think is really important. So, as you look at this, maybe for staff, AKA Mary, to put some thought into like, what are some dashboarding metrics that could go alongside all of these programs that we could include in that communication? So, not just compelling participation, but reporting back out to our community the success of that.
Can I add to that? I think, I like that idea a lot, and I think that would be an easy lift for me to do, just to share. We could create a new sub-page on our sustainability pages and just like graphically show all of our events, like a year-end total of what all has been collected and recycled, and make sure that we're sharing that out.
I have a wild vision of that messaging board that we're eventually going to get at some point, that we've been only talking about since the dawn of time. Yeah, since electricity was invented, we've talked about a messaging board. But, I mean, I think, you know, just having those, those messages also like, like scattered throughout the community. So, when, you know, like we could do displays at the rec center, like have a, you know, waste diversion awareness month and have, you know, just, so, so thinking both in that like sort of granular level about where are we reaching people, where they organically show up and not expecting them to do the 124 click into our website to find the thing, so.
Counselor Hoppy?
Thank you. And, and just to kind of tag on to that, you know, there, there, we all know that there's like toolkits out there that have, you know, information about why recycling's important and stuff like that. Like, that's not it, we don't have to reinvent the wheel with those. But, in, in the engagement piece, you know, really engaging into our elementary, our middle, and our high school, because they all have sustainability groups, like student groups in those, and that would be a really great place to kind of bring in the youth into this program.
Okay. So, do we have sort of a consensus to move forward with the communication strategy that is, that is sort of a tier 1.5, and, and utilizes our existing staff? And I think within the existing budget, is that, I heard that sort of by inference? Okay, and we have consensus on that. Okay. We're moving along. Continue.
Thank you. Last recommendation. This one, I'm going to have Jessica speak to the most, because HGR is also leading this effort with the Circular Action Alliance on behalf of the CD-PHE and the Extended Producer Responsibility. But, this recommendation is to educate city and for you all at the council and staff level to stay engaged with the Extended Producer Responsibility efforts. And with that, Jessica, I will turn it over to you to give the overview of that, that program and the impacts to Wheat Ridge specifically.
Yeah, thanks Tara, and hi everyone. I am, I'm sorry I can't be there with you in person. I used to live and work in Denver for many, many years, and I don't live there anymore, but luckily I get to do some work in Colorado still, and it's very close, close to home for me still. So, I'm happy to be here today. I wanted to talk a little bit about why, so none of the past, previous recommendations included anything about regular kind of curbside recycling, the paper, glass, plastic, metals that, that we were, that were briefly mentioned. And that's because we really, because of this recommendation, we really want the city Wheat Ridge to keep an eye and to stay engaged with the conversations around Extended Producer Responsibility implementation in Colorado. So, a little bit about what Extended Producer Responsibility is. It's often called EPR. I'm just going to give a quick background in case anyone isn't totally up to speed. So, EPR legislation is, is a type of policy that essentially requires the producers of, of an item, of a material to be responsible for it throughout its entire lifecycle. So, once it's purchased through collection and processing, recycling, proper disposal, whatever it may be, the producers are, are paying for it and managing that system. So, it's common and, and mostly passed at the state level really, and for things like electronics, paint, mattresses, those are widely adopted programs across the country. What's been happening lately, and is kind of the new hot topic, is producer responsibility for packaging materials. So, in 2022, Colorado passed its EPR bill for packaging. And essentially, what that is requiring is that the, the brands, the producers of, of packaging material are represented by a singular nonprofit organization, that's Circular Action Alliance. And Circular Action Alliance is, is responsible for implementing this program statewide. The policy is designed to basically take the, the financial responsibility off of the municipalities, the residents who typically pay for these recycling programs, and put it onto the, onto the shoulders, if you will, of, of the brands who own the packaging. So, with EPR implementation in Colorado, Circular Action Alliance is going to be reimbursing the players in the recycling system. So, the haulers that provide recycling collection, the, the recycling facility processors, the educators, the, the staff within those programs, reimbursing them for the recycling system. So, I guess in the example that we were talking about earlier, if Wheat Ridge owned a drop-off for those kind of like "curbside" quote-unquote recycling materials, you would be considered part of the recycling system and would apply for reimbursement for that. But, in, in the current state, and so, the reality of, of where Wheat Ridge is at now with the open market system, you know, luckily, I'm able to work with Circular Action Alliance on a daily basis on this, and just talk to them today about, about specifically Wheat Ridge and, and the connection to EPR implementation. And, and right now, where they're at with that is that with the open market in, in Wheat Ridge, they would be just working directly with the haulers actually to reimburse them for providing recycling service and, and expanding recycling service curbside in Wheat Ridge. And those residents would no longer be invoiced directly for, for their curbside recycling services, and CA would be reimbursing the haulers for that. So, the city, because the city doesn't manage any of the collection contracts or anything of that nature, then CA would just, yeah, be working directly with the haulers. So, that's kind of, you know, in its preliminary stages of, of planning is how it's looking to be implemented, and, and all of these reimbursements and things would begin in, in 2026. So, that's kind of like an ongoing effort where CAA is developing this, they call it a program plan, and, and that's going to be reviewed by the state and the advisory board, which is full of stakeholders in the industry. And I'm, I'm happy to go into any nerdy details with anyone at a later date. There's a lot to this. It's kind of a complicated new subject, and we're definitely paving the way here in Colorado. So, yeah, happy, happy to follow up with anyone if, if you have any questions.
Thank you. And to continue through the last few slides here, thank you Jessica for that overview. As she had mentioned, Colorado's really at the leading edge of this. There, there's no other state that's really diving into this. So, we are the poster child so far, and it's one of the coolest, I think, I'm supposed to be unbiased here, but this is a really cool program, because it does make it quite easy to, for residents to divert their waste into the recycling stream. So, next step, council and staff should participate in stakeholder opportunities hosted by the Circular Action Alliance, and HGR is happy to make those connections as appropriate, as well as the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, to understand the EPR planning process, potential impacts to your community in more detail than Jessica outlined tonight. The city can also engage with other statewide recycling organizations above and beyond maybe what you already are doing, like Recycle Colorado, to facilitate input for CAA or to answer questions. So, if it's too much to invest time at your level partnering with a larger organization like Recycle Colorado, who is at, at those meetings on a regular basis, is also a recommended effort. Level one, tier one, few hours a quarter for council and/or staff to engage in these meetings and stay connected with some of these stakeholder groups, and it will not require budget outside of what your time is worth to attend those. Because the CAA and the state is leading this new House bill, as Jessica outlined, it really is a pretty low impact to the city, because you're in an open market. If we were in a different type of hauling system, Jessica would be explaining what this EPR impact would be if you did have a licensed hauler or a municipal hauling system. It'd be a little bit more complicated in some respects, but as she had mentioned, the city really wouldn't see much of this. Your residents would just not have to pay for it from their hauler.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen?
Well, this seems like a no, no brainer, yes. I was trying not to be that excited. Yeah. However, would I like to go back to our la, we don't have to go back to our last item, but on the communications piece, is that it feels important to me in 2026, when this comes online, that the city has a really concerted effort, because what this is depending on in our community is for neighbors to sign up for this. And so, letting people know that, I mean, whether it's free or lower cost, or whatever that ends up looking like, I think, I just want to make a note that in 2026, that we should be making a commitment to do a pretty concerted communication with our community members to really encourage their participation in that program, since it's low no cost, so.
And if, if I may add or ask Jessica, as part of the efforts of this final, final plan with CAA, I thought I remember you talking about a toolkit for cities like Wheat Ridge to potentially utilize as it relates to education, but I might have, I might be misspeaking.
You're, you're correct. They'll be coming out with a statewide education campaign and a, and a big investment per household in recycling education. And so, I think that later, a little bit later down the line, there will be more information and, and, you know, and toolkits and things like that, that you'll be able to, to repurpose for your residents.
Additional questions or thoughts on this item? Counselor Larson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And the way I understand this program, it is a strictly a funding vehicle. They're not going to be involved in actually doing contracts and working with the haulers. The haulers will continue to do what they do. If they have a contract with a apartment complex or an HOA, the hauler then applies for reimbursement? Is that how it works?
Jessica?
The hauler, the hauler would engage in a contract with CAA and to request reimbursement, they'd have to qualify for that reimbursement, and, and those details are not quite, quite ironed out yet. But, but no, there wouldn't be kind of any meddling with the, the hauling contracts.
And, and individual homeowner that already has recycling service, is, is that, would that be covered as well?
Yeah, so I guess that line item on the bill would be no more.
If, if they're being charged for recycling?
Right.
Okay. Okay, yeah, no, that answered my question. Thank you.
Thanks.
If, if a homeowner was, was able to take their own recycling to a recycling center, would they be, would, would they be able to get a, pay back on that?
I don't, I don't think that's how it works.
Okay, okay. No surprise there. Let me, let me ask, let me ask one more, maybe.
But, I mean, it's a fair, it's a fair question.
Let me ask one more, maybe no, no surprise question. Is it anticipated that the producers would, would the charge, the customers from, on the, when they buy the product to cover the cost of this program?
Well, Jessica, do you want to answer both of those? I think I know the answer, but I'll defer to you as our project manager for this.
You're right on the first one, Tara, that there wouldn't, you know, the cost to manage a drop-off for those recyclables, like, would be a reversible thing for the, the city or the entity that's managing it, but the resident wouldn't, it would be a free drop-off for the resident, is, is what it would be. And then, to your second question about increased costs, that is a question that commonly, commonly comes up when we talk about this type of legislation. And to my understanding, at this point in time, no one has any true data that the costs do increase for consumers. These programs have been implemented in Canada, in Europe, and have, for many years. And, and there is, there is no general consensus that the price would go up for a consumer.
And to, to just add to that first question, I know we had a good giggle about it, but Jess, I just wanted to be sure you all noted that if the second recommendation, for example, like a permanent recycling drop-off facility were to eventually be something you all do, and this legislation is still in place, which, you know, hopefully it is, that would be something that the city, if you managed to know that, would get reimbursed for through that program. So, it's, we're, we're so early in this. The final plan is getting wrapped up by Jessica and the CAA here in the new year, and then there'll be more stakeholder engagement and the rollout, as you know. Any House bill that comes out, it takes a bit. But, 2016 will be here soon, and you'll definitely be seeing impact soon. Yeah. Yeah, 2016 is when it would-
2026.
2026. I'm sorry. I don't know where I'm at. 2026. I don't know why I have 2016. Take that off the record. My apologies.
And I had sort of one other, one other question, just as a curiosity. Is there a, is there a real difference in the cost of recycling between a single stream and having it already segregated when it hits the, when it hits a, you know, a collector, I guess?
Solid Waste Planner, Jessica, go.
Yeah, I'm here. So, I think that the difference, there's, there's a couple of different differences in, in that whole system, right? So, if it's, if it's separated, you'll need separate containers, separate trucks. Sometimes, you know, it depends on the program. If we're talking about like a curbside separated program, those are, you know, like split trucks and split containers and things. And, or if it's a drop-off, you know, that's many, many different containers and many different trucks for collection. But, the, you know, there are folks that say that, you know, once, if you collect everything separately, that the, those materials are a lot cleaner and therefore a lot more valuable to the end markets, as opposed to when you collect them all single stream and have to sort them at the, at the recycling facility. And, you know, technology's improving, and, and we're able to separate things a lot, a lot better, and to get that kind of quality. But, but definitely the quality is, is almost guaranteed if you're collecting it separately to begin with. So, all of those different things would have to be measured in order to understand like the, the different costs of those systems.
And I guess I have one other sort of overarching question, is at the current time, are there markets for these recycled materials sort of in the Colorado, or are they national, or are they international? Or do we sort of recycle and, and it goes into a landfill?
So, this is something that comes up all the time, because I think recycling frankly gets like some bad press sometimes. But, recycling is, is certainly real, and, and definitely in Colorado, where, you know, Colorado's landlocked, and, and a lot of the end markets are actually domestic. Not a lot is really shipped overseas. And so, with this EPR program, one of the benefits that I didn't mention is that it creates a statewide recycling list. So, finally, like this consistent list that all recycling educators have been waiting a long time for, of what is accepted in my bin. And all of those materials, through the needs assessment, which is the first kind of study that we, that HGR actually did for the CAA and for the state, to understand kind of like the gap analysis and the cost of implementation of EPR, we, we did determine what this, this materials list would look like, and that it is materials that are currently collected, processed, and have end markets by the facilities in the state. Not all material state in the state. We have a very strong in-state glass end market, but in a lot of, of the other materials just end up going to end markets in North America.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any additional discussion on sub item number five?
Yes.
Just one more thing. It's just the, what we're looking at here, the recommendation is, is to stay engaged. What does stay engaged mean?
May I? Okay. Specifically, and Jessica, I think this, we're going to be having some more conversations with Mary specifically, but there are regular stakeholder meetings that you can participate in. Jessica, did you want to outline any of those specifics in terms- Jessica, did you want to outline any of those specifics in terms of that level of effort?
No, I think, I think that that's it. And then honestly, you know, with the communications and, and education opportunities for your residents, being that you guys will likely be in, in open market by the time this is implemented, just understanding what the, what the communications to residents are in an open market system, once that kind of plan is, is finalized will be the most important thing so that residents, you know, you know, you said it earlier, can take advantage of, of signing up for those services and making sure they're aware that it's not an additional cost.
And we can get back to you on the, on the frequency of those, but there is a, what, regular website where materials are updated as we move forward into actually finalizing what that plan looks like and that rollout to 2026. You know, we can certainly provide more information, but I know, I know Jessica and I have pushed Mary and Mary, and specifically I'm staying close to that because it is going to have some substantial impacts and great community messaging and benefits at, at a large scale.
Oh, I guess. So, sort of on item number five, do we have consensus to stay engaged and make that, I assume, part of our communication strategy to our residents? Terrific. Okay. Well, that's one through five.
Yeah, and we just have next steps, which we've done here in terms of taking direction, and Mary has some closing words.
Sure, yeah, thank you for all the input and direction that you've provided us. We will take that and digest these a bit more, and I think it's likely that we will come back to a future meeting with additional information to share with you, especially if there's any sort of kind of budget considerations that we may need further direction on. But rest assured, we will take your direction and run with it for our next steps.
Well, thank you very much. Great, great report that you got here and great discussion tonight. So, we appreciate your work. Thanks so much, Mary.
Thank you.
And Mary Anne. Thank you. Okay, I think that it's the second of our two action items tonight. We'll go now to staff reports. Mr. Goff.
Just real briefly, if you did not hear when we are on our little break, our Clear Creek Makerspace won an award, an award from the JEPCO Economic Development Corporation, the Gateway Award for Community Partner Award. Yeah, so that was pretty cool. And I heard Page told us today that the Makerspace has gotten a lot of press recently, too. There was a Channel Four story, and they've received over, I think, 35 new memberships in the last two weeks. So, they're up over 150, 160, I think, right now, which is way, way beyond their, their goals, so it's.
But not capacity.
Well, they're out of capacity now, so they may be coming back to ask for more space, but it's, it's a successful program, so it's very exciting. Thanks.
All right. Elected officials matters. Counselor Holtein.
Thanks, I'll be quick. I was hoping to catch Maria while she was still here. So, this was brought up earlier today, but I've been meaning to suggest that with our 2J project dollars that we have funded by 2J signs that go with them. So, again, so our community is making connections between investments in their community and a ballot initiative that we took to them to be supported. So, I know it's, we've like named it something else, but I think.
The next chapter, 2J bond funds.
Yeah, so anyways, somehow making that connection, I think, would be really important. And then I just wanted to share, I, last night went to a Friendsgiving at the Grange, and there were at least 50 people, tons of kids, someone, there were a couple bands. It was the funnest Friendsgiving, way more fun than my actual Thanksgiving, will be with my own, own family, but it was, it was mostly Wheat Ridge people and just a deep affirmation of how fortunate we are to have the Grange in our community. It's such a great community gathering space, and it is challenging to figure out how to join it, but I really encourage everyone to find a way to support the Grange because if we were to lose that asset in our community, we'd really lose something incredibly special. So, I, I woke up with a, I had too much to eat last night feeling this morning because it was just really good, good food, good, good friends, good experience, and that's the kind of thing that happens in Wheat Ridge on, on the Grange. So, anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you. And just for clarity, that was the Wheat Ridge Grange.
That's true. We have multiple Granges.
More than one Grange.
I was, I was at the Wheat Ridge Grange adjacent to the Grange, and the other, the other Grange is up on Youngs Field and.
Yeah, 30, 31.
Yeah, the, yeah, yeah. No, that's the Maple, it's the Maple Grove. Yeah.
Maple Grove.
But it's technically in Wheat Ridge. Wheat Ridge has multiple Granges, so, because we're awesome that way.
Great. Additional reports. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to Local Works and on their, and the Clear Creek Makerspace on their award. I also wanted to give a shout out to Local Works and to Mary Anne and Chief Kellogg. I got to participate with the Wheat Ridge 101 a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, for some of the police drills and things that they, they did, and absolutely amazing. It was the same night as the officer in Golden was killed, and you could tell that was very much weighing on them, and they were stepping into Golden to help out, but our officers, as usual, are very professional, did a phenomenal job working with the community. And anybody who's interested in Wheat Ridge 101, we have the graduation coming up, I think, on the ninth here in council chambers, but everybody should sign up. It's, it's an absolutely amazing program, so thank you.
Counselors Om.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll try to be brief. I attended the NLC City Summit down in Tampa, and I just want to say, you know, what a great opportunity as a, as a council member to go. And not only, you know, you go there for the, the sessions, the seminars, and you learn a lot, but it's also all those, you know, side conversations with other council members and mayors, and just, you know, trying to understand where everybody kind of comes from and, and sharing different ideas. I was, I was really grateful for NLC Rebecca Trout to invite myself and, and Council Member Snell to the, with other 20 other council people, mayors from all over the United States to have discussions about just different ideas about how we engage our citizens, you know, and he, there's definitely some commonalities, and there are some things that they didn't have, and I, I was more than happy to share the successes of Wheat Ridge. We've done a lot. There was more than a couple people that they're just like Hall of Fame Wheat Ridge. They were, you know, we, so we've, we've done, we've done really well, and I'm really, really, really proud of that. And so, people, we had quite the reputation for, you know, especially for a small city, you know, for how big we are. But that's, that's all I'm going to say about that, and, but had a great time with Council Member Snell, and it was, it was great hosting, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Snell.
I'll just add to that. I, I won't mention who, but I did hear a couple of times from, from other counselors that I met, the actual quote was, "Well, let's look and see how they did it in Wheat Ridge." "We're doing great, great things," and I was very, very fortunate to be able to attend the City Summit. It was, it was a great experience, lots of great connections, as Council Member Om said, and also just some really top-notch sessions and information, information sessions on, on great things that, you know, have worked in other communities that you can adapt for your community. So, as soon as I can kind of get a little bit of sprays, space in my brain, because it's full right now, I will download a little bit more of that, but incredible experience and also very, very proud to represent our community. Thank you.
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to echo those sentiments in terms of the perception that, that there, that exists out there of Wheat Ridge. I attended the Colorado Municipal League Workshop back on November 7th for, it's called the Workshop for Effective Governance, aimed primarily at new, new council people, and there were probably 25 or 30 people from all over the state of Colorado. I got to sit next to the councilperson from Aurora, and then some folks from Lakewood on one side, and cities and towns all over, all over Colorado. But time and again, it came up, an issue came up on that reflected, or that was about good governance and how the, how to be effective as a city councilperson or whatever, and, and it was, it was Wheat Ridge. It's like, oh, this, they, that's how they do it over there, and, and so I'm very proud of that. And then after that, the day after that, I got the opportunity to ride along with one of our police officers, and we got to drive most of the day around the Kipling and I-70 area on a very snowy day, so it wasn't a whole lot of activity, so allowed this really good one-on-one conversation with one of our, one of our top police officers out there, and, and it just, it just made me feel good that, that knowing that we've got such professional police out there on the streets. The other, the other day was, the following week, it was last week on Wednesday, I got, it wasn't a ride along, it was a walk along. I got to walk with our school resource officer, Wheat Ridge High School, and kind of see some of the things that, that they face on a daily basis, and, and both good and bad. There were a lot of kind of good sort of exchanges of information and, and an opportunity to see some of our, some of the folks at the high school in action and how they interact with our school resource officers. So, that was, it was a very eye-opening experience, and I'm, I'm, I would recommend that if people are interested in what our school resource officers, what they do on a daily basis, certainly make the inquiry, and, and you'll be very, very, I think, pleased with what you hear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I will close with, it was my honor to go to Commander Jim Lorenz's retirement over the last week. He's a 42 or 43-year veteran of the, of the, well, in policing, and he's been with Wheat Ridge almost the whole time, right?
The whole time.
The whole time. Okay, so anyway, we, he's, he's provided great, great service and, and his great talents to Wheat Ridge, and we really appreciate his service, and I want to wish him the best in his next chapter, so. If there's no more business to come before us tonight, we will be back here at a, at a regular meeting one week from tonight, so we will see you all then. We'll stand adjourned. Thank you.